It is 7:15. We will reconvene in open session this workshop of the WISD Board of Trustees. We've been a closed session under Section 551.074. No action was taken. No one signed up for audience for guests, correct, Sandra? As a courtesy to folks who are here from the campuses, we're going to take a couple of things out of order. And where have they gone?
I.
We're going to go down to item I, our improvement plans, item 6I. Is there any objection to taking those out of order? Then we will go to the district and campus improvement plans. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, we wanted to first talk about our district improvement plans. These are living documents that we have been editing weekly based on our data. For the record, we've included this year in our district improvement plan employee opinion surveys, parental involvement surveys, campus needs assessments, federal and state programs, guidelines, and a host of other artifacts used to develop this plan. We provided the draft for you and will be recommending approval or consent. Any comments or questions?
Any comments or questions on the district improvement plan? Start at page, what?
Ninety-one.
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two. Excuse me.
All right. Campus improvement plans.
Thank you, Mr. President. We also have tonight, we're presenting our campus improvement plans. You know, I've pretty much visited with each trustee about these. We recognize that they're an annual activity. Our campuses have tried to be creative and really create campus improvement plans that are uniquely tied to their data. However, there are some initiatives in place that sometimes appear a little redundant on the campus improvement plan, and that's because it's more than a one-year initiative. And so, I applaud the principals for submitting the drafts that you've been provided, and we'd be happy to entertain any comments or questions by principal. We can answer for our campus. Each principal can speak for theirselves, or Dr. Williams can speak for, Assistant Superintendent for School Improvement can speak for the district.
All right.
Any comments or questions?
Ms. Cardwell, you probably have a question on each, each for, each plan, correct? Two questions and a comment?
Yeah, two questions and a comment.
No, no. All right. Anybody have any questions?
We'll thank the principals for their hard work and being patient, and certainly hope you get some rest tonight and continue the great work.
And they're all free to go, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks, folks.
May we proceed? You want to wait?
We'll give him a minute. Back up to the top.
Yes, sir. B. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
We will go back up to the top of the agenda. We're to item 5A, presentation and discussion of the Internal Audit Department. Dr. Nelson, do you want to give any introduction?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've had a great conversations with our internal audit department of one. Mrs. Cardwell has done a great job, and she's spent the last year trying to put some systems in place for our internal audit program, and I want to applaud her publicly for her efforts. She has a brief overview of a departmental update on things that she's been working on. As you know, we have an audit committee that has had an opportunity to discuss in detail some of the audits that Mrs. Cardwell has completed. We will be working on a procedure to make sure all seven board members have an opportunity to participate and at least have high levels of awareness of the work of our audit committee. So with that, would you like to take us through your presentation, Mrs. Cardwell?
Thank you, Dr. Nelson, Board President, members of the board. I'm going to give you an update at the Internal Audit Department for the 2016-17 fiscal. Oh, can you hear me?
There we go. No. Be that close.
Let's see. How does this?
It shouldn't be over.
I apologize.
There we go.
Okay. What you should have in your packets and what I'll be going over tonight are the list of completed audits for the 2016-17 fiscal year, the internal audit charter, and I will give an overview of how the risk assessment was performed. So the first thing I want you to see is the list of completed audits for the 2016-17 year. There were two inventory observations, one on each of the warehouses. There were six campus audits, one high school, or, excuse me, two high schools, one middle school, and three elementary schools, two departmental audits, and four audits outside of the audit schedule on activity funds, and one on a department expenditures. The, I also have the audit schedule for the 2017-18 year and the three-year audit plan. The internal audit department also oversees parent organizations for all campuses across the district and lighthouse reporting. Next is the internal audit charter that states the purpose, the authority, and the responsibility of internal audit. The purpose being to provide analyses, recommendations, and information on all areas reviewed by internal audit. The authority as to what internal audit has the authority to do and what it does not have the authority to do, and the responsibility that all activities be performed with proficiency and do professional care. This charter is reviewed and updated annually by the internal audit department and reviewed and approved by the audit committee. And as noted, all signatures are on file in the internal audit office. And so now we have the risk assessment, and I'll go through each of these areas. Standards state that an annual risk assessment should be performed, and from that risk assessment, an audit schedule and an audit plan should be completed. And this is by the Institute of Internal Auditors. So the first thing I did was I gathered information, and I did this in a number of different ways. First, I reviewed risk assessments and audit plans of other school districts. I reviewed organizational charts within our district. I've reviewed the annual budget. I researched the TEA, the TASBO, and the Institute of Internal Auditor websites. Continuing education classes. TASBO has a great one-day class on risk assessment. And then initially, my initial risk assessment in 2016, I went and met with campus principals through all the campuses throughout the district and most of the department heads in all the departments of the district. And from that, I was able to get a good feel of the district to determine what the auditable areas are and what the risk areas are. This year in 2017, I was able to complete the risk assessment in about two to three And so, from that, I identified, or was able to identify, 54 auditable areas, and that being the campuses, the departments, and then areas within the departments. And once I was able to gather all my information and determine what the auditable areas are and the risk areas, I was able to rate, score, and rank. Went too far, I apologize. I need to go back one. Thank you. So for the departments, I found 10 risk factors, and for the campuses, there were seven. And I look at different areas, you know, depending on the department and the campuses. For campuses, I like to spend a lot of time on activity funds and attendance. For campuses, or departments, you know, I'll spend more time on regulations, state and federal regulations, turnover with key employees, and so forth. Within these risk factors and, can we go back one, please? Yeah, right there. I was able to rate each auditable area within the risk factor, and some of these ratings came from assistant superintendents, the CFO, department heads, campus principals, and they are confidential ratings. And I was able to put them into a matrix, which I sent to the full board last month, and determine the weighted average. And from there, I was able to rank these areas from low, medium, and high risk. And here are the department risk factors. Again, I look at the regulatory impact, turnover in key management. I look at internal controls, the financial impact with the budget, and departmental expenditures. I like to look at the, any audits that have been performed on the departments, external audits, any audits from state or federal agencies, and what those results are. And then with the campuses, again, the two main things, the areas I spend the most time on are activity funds and attendance, so I want to know what the competency level of those PMS clerks are. And once I have, once I'm able to rate each auditable area from low, medium, and high, I can create the annual audit schedule and the three-year audit plan. So the areas selected for this coming year, for 2017-18, I have 13 campus audits, seven departmental audits, and five additional audits in the event that the campus and departmental audits are completed before the year's over. And once I draft the annual schedule and the internal, and the three-year plan, I submit it to the audit committee for review, and then, once we've reviewed it, it's approved by the audit committee.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
So we just want to clarify that that's one piece. The audit committee technically will not be approving. They'll be reviewing. And, go ahead.
It is approved.
Yeah, we've got the actual reports which will be submitted.
Or review.
And then this is the actual development of the schedule and the plan for the coming year.
Point well taken. Well then, I guess I just need to clarify that the board needs an opportunity for input before the committee approves. That concludes her presentation. Are there any comments or questions from the board? If not, we have, may we have permission to proceed?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Let me say publicly, because it's the board officers that are currently sitting on the audit committee, we do appreciate the work you do and the professionalism with which you approach doing that risk analysis, and then when other things come up, asking for approval on changes, et cetera, and keep up the good work. We will go on to Lone Star Gov, oh, we're on the clock. Lone Star Governance, Career Technology, English Learners Program, et cetera. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have our outstanding Director of Career and Technical Education to present a career and technical update on goal progress measure 3.3. Ms. Donna McCaffrey.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to let you look at this and kind of explain to you what, how this goal was set and what we're using it for. This particular goal talks about students completing the CTE program or completing the practicum course. When they set up the new guidelines for our, to get an endorsement, the CTE courses in our academies fell under the endorsement, and there are, there's a slide there if you'll go to this slide.
Amen.
On the slide, he'll get up there in a second. Well, the way we have these set up is that our students, when they're in the eighth grade, choose the academy, and here's the, here we go. They choose the academy they want to get, but we set it up so that if a student changes their mind after their freshman year, they can still earn an endorsement after their, you know, because we need two years of classwork and a capstone. So you can see up here, the way we set it up is we have it for the student, if they choose, say, for example, they choose to go into health careers, and they go into that first health career class, and they realize that there's blood involved, and they don't want to do that, they want to do, work on a car instead of working on a human, then there's still time for them to complete that endorsement by having two capstones. Obviously, if the student starts their freshman year and takes all four courses, they're going to get a much richer experience, but we wanted to make sure that they would be able to complete that capstone. So when you look at this particular progress measure, what we're looking at is how many of those students were able to complete that, at least the three-year cycle of two courses and a capstone. When we started this, this was on the commissioner's goal of four, I think, I don't know if they call them measures four, but on the fourth part of the report card for the district, and so that's why we chose this. Now, from my understanding, he had, the commissioner has some concerns about this particular goal, and so it would move into goal number one, and they're taking, they're actually right now taking public comment on that. His concern, and I'm pleased that as we planned this, his concern was that some districts don't have capstones. So in other words, they might just take four classes that were in the same area but not necessarily leading to a, you know, a rigorous fourth, or third or fourth year. So I'm not sure where we're going to go with that, but that is where we are. With our students moving to the new graduation plan, that's why this progress measure increased quicker than what we anticipated, so we are at 86.2 percent. When you break that down, I've got it broken down by campus, we have less at Brazos. Those students oftentimes are mostly concerned with getting their credits and maybe leaving sooner than they have time. We have some provisions in place. I've been working with, with them to be able to have some CTE courses and some capstone experiences for them as well. Waco High is at 88.5 percent, and University is at 95 percent. If they didn't get a capstone course or an endorsement in one of the CTE programs, then they are getting it in either multidisciplinary or human arts, or human, yeah, arts and humanities. Okay? So on the next slide that I put up here, I thought that one of the things that we had talked about before was kind of to revisit the CTE measures because we've been hitting them, and hitting them quite well, but I want to make sure that we're doing the best for kids. So when we looked at, in the last couple of weeks, we looked at CTE in terms of certifications on the percentage of kids who took and passed the test. So I thought that we might, instead of just reinventing the wheel, perhaps look at a different, look at it in a different way that might, you know, give us a little more rigor in that particular goal. And so what we looked at, instead of just looking at the percentage of passing, we could look at how many of those certifications we have now. We're actually working at adding more certifications, and then also, how many actual number of kids are getting them rather than the percentage of passing. So I thought that might be a little different way to look at it, and so I included that in my slides as a way of maybe revisiting that goal, giving us a little bit more of a, I mean, percentages are great. You know, when you talk about the state and you want to have a certain percentage passing, that's what's on Perkins. But I also think we also need to look at, this number of kids is what that, what that percentage represents, and increasing those number of kids, maybe, because as we increase, we want more and more kids, but you're not seeing that in the percentage, so I thought that might be a better way of looking at it. So I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Catherine, if you look at revisiting those progress measures, I mean, is there a timeline to see if this will give you more meaningful information to present to the board with the, with the tweaks or the changed progress?
Well, I wanted to, I would be glad to make the timeline. What we're doing is, I just want to give you more information. I think it would be better information for me as well. I mean, because that's really what we're doing, is trying to improve. We're hitting the state requirement of the 80 percent passing, but I want to see more kids, so instead of just saying, you know, five, you know, four out of five got it, what is, let's get to 10 or 15 or 20 so that we can see those numbers. That would give me better feedback, I think, to work with the teachers on. So that's what I wanted to propose. And then also the number, we're adding actually five new certifications here in automotive. I met with Bobby Horner this week about adding some coding certifications for the new building construction program. So I want to make sure that we're getting more and more of those and not just being satisfied with we've got this many and have 80 percent passing them.
I guess, I was going to ask what information would be helpful to you. I mean, I think the one concern that's universally held by this board is, although we understand the Lone Star Governance framework, we don't want it to do anything but create busy work for the administration. I mean, it needs to be information that although helps us monitor our goals, actually is useful to you in terms of implementing the program on the ground. And if you think these tweaks would be more meaningful to give you the better information, which I think is what you just said, then I guess at some point within the framework we need to decide, are we going to formally change our progress measures and adopt these, or is this just going to be supplemental information you provide us? And we can do it either way.
Either way that you would want me to do it, I'll be glad to, but it's something that I'm, what I would like to monitor. If I put in automotive, for example, let's say that this year we put in the automotive program, I'm going to be able better to monitor that automotive program and those certifications if we get 20 this year, and then next year we get 30, and I'd rather see the numbers, I think, as opposed to the percentage passing. Not that you don't watch that as well, but, you know, what does that percentage represent? I think this would be information that you could use, and I think we could evaluate the program better by, by numbers.
Well, I'll let you do, I mean, I think, you and your department then just need to visit and decide, do you want us to formally change the goal progress measures, or do you just want to provide this as supplemental information in addition to the progress measures we're already getting? I can make a case both ways. I mean, the progress measures are not particularly useful if we're already
Hitting them.
Hitting them and above them in year one, and I think that's something we need to be aware of. But I'm okay getting this as additional information.
That's fine.
Either way, however you want to do it.
And, Dr. Nelson, however you choose.
And whatever y'all want to do.
It's something I'm going to monitor, so however you would like me to present it, whether you, to me, it's more valuable information. This is how many certifications we had this year, this is how many we have next year, and looking at actual number increase of students.
Thank you.
Yeah. Ms. Manning?
Ms. McCaffrey, would you, you probably told me before, but what is the definite, what is capstone again, please?
A capstone, there, most of the courses are two-credit courses, and they take information that you have gained those first two years and put it together in a more real-world type of experience. In a capstone, I'll use, let's say for the school store at Waco High, that's a capstone. They're actually taking what they've learned about marketing and advertising and sales, and then going into the store and applying all those things. So what a capstone does is kind of like taking everything you've learned for two years and molding it into, to an experience that's richer and fuller, and actually applying that knowledge.
So actual work?
Yes, sir.
Work?
Well, work experience, and it doesn't necessarily have to be like in a store. It could also be in culinary arts where they've taken different pieces, and they're building and building, and then their senior year, they're molding it into that, or say, in welding, they've, they've taken those, it's kind of like when you learn to ride a, you know, you have your training wheels on those first two years, and you're riding, and you're riding, and you're riding, and all of a sudden, we take them off and let you experience what that's really like, to ride that bike, or to do that, that event, other, that more of a workforce type of experience.
And you have this for all of the CTE courses?
Yes, sir. The only one that we're, we're working on this year is we do not have what we think is an appropriate capstone for our criminal justice program, and so both business advisory boards from University and Waco High have taken that on as their area to explore, and we'll be looking at adding some certifications and some experiences in 911 operator and jailer and some other things that we feel like could better serve our students, as opposed to just taking another, we want it to be rich like the other ones are. So that's the one area we feel like we need to really focus on.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Kell?
I had a question about, so you started out saying that they're dropping index four?
Yes.
And, okay.
Yes.
And then CTE and the number of certifications and whatnot's going to be rolled into the high schools' index one. So I'm thinking that to make these more relevant, we need to wait to see what those rules end up being.
That's fine.
So that we create a, a goal that's tied to index one.
Because on the original index four, what you're looking at in front of you tonight was a part of index four. My understanding, and I've been pretty active in trying to have a voice in what the CTE part of those look like. And one of the things that we have heard is that the commissioner, like I said, sometimes some school districts do not have a capstone. They may just take like four classes, which meet the letter of the law, but they don't have that capstone piece. And so from what my understanding is, the commissioner says they should have these capstone experiences that top off what they've learned. Does that make sense? And so, it may be that across the state, we have to give up, we've had to give up some things, and we took on some academic CTE classes. There may be have to be that these are the ones that count and these do not. So I'll be working with our professional organization, trying to help define what that looks like for that college readiness piece, so that we can have other than, I think our concern is that everything in index one costs money. You have to pay for certifications, you have to pay for these things, and so there's a lot of concern for school districts that may not be able, or students that may not be able to get their certifications, how are they going to reach any kind of proficiency in Level One? So that's kind of where we're pushing at the state level, and if that helps.
Anything else? Thank you, Ms. McCaffrey.
Thank you.
Next is update on English Learners Program.
Thank you, Ms., I'll make a few comments. Thank you, Mr. President. We have our Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education, Mrs. Grace Benson, will be making this presentation, and directly tied to our intent to prove student outcomes. Mrs. Benson?
Thank you, Dr. Nelson, and esteemed Board of Trustees. Per TEA regulations, each district with an enrollment of 20 or more students with limited English proficiency in any language in the same grade level shall offer bilingual education or other type of special language program. While this year is higher than previous years, we do have 20 less students in the program this year. I believe this reflects some of the trends in our district, and we also have parents, interestingly, that have also requested to have our students that have not met the requirement for the program to be placed in the program, which I'll talk, you know, a little bit further about. We have three more parent denials this year than we have in the past. However, we significantly have reduced our number of parent denials, and we've done this by working very hard with our parents and educating them about the importance of bilingual education. We've had, this year, we had 10 parents that requested placement in the bilingual program, even though their children did not meet their requirement to enter the program. We've looked at options in the past, and we, like, last year, we talked about a dual-language program to increase our enrollment in our program. We looked at possibly piloting it in one of our elementary schools. In looking at the interest that we have from parents in placing their children who do not meet criteria in the program, we really feel that we could pilot it and start with the kindergarten level, and then start maybe with a dual-language, one-way, or two-way Next, you will see the number of bilingual students by grade level. The numbers taper as the students progress through their academic career at the elementary level. This is indicative of the bilingual model of our district. We have a transitional bilingual or early exit program that serves to transition students to instruction that is only provided in English. Our numbers reflect our model, and for example, we have 12 bilingual teachers in kindergarten, and in contrast, we have four bilingual teachers in third grade, four in fourth grade, and two bilingual teachers in fifth grade. Some of the schools with the most bilingual teachers are Cedar Ridge and Bells Hill. In the next slide, you will notice that we have most of our ESL students in grades three through five. This is also indicative of our, of our model because we don't offer bilingual at all grade levels at all. at all campuses in elementary. If parents do not want to transfer their child to an elementary campus that does offer bilingual, the child is then served through an ESL program. We have two programs that we offer. We offer content-based, which is where the classroom teacher holds an ESL certification. And then we also have pull-out. And this is when the child is pulled out and provided with ESL instruction through the services provided by an ESL certified teacher. This is the model I was served under when I was a child. Next, we have our monitored and exited students. Monitored students have been exited and they're in their first year of monitoring. And then we have students that are monitored in the second year. After two years, we no longer need to monitor the students. We have one hundred and seventy-nine monitored students in year one and two hundred and twenty-one students in year two. We have exited one hundred and sixty-five students and as of now, we have fourteen more that were exited. Next, I'm going to be sharing our data from the Tellpass assessment that our students took. The Tellpass assessment assesses the four language domains. It assesses listening, speaking, reading, and writing. Writing is the most difficult for our English learners to master since they are transferring from a transparent language to an opaque language. In a transparent language, children learn to read through syllables. Basically, it's easier for children to read in Spanish. In an opaque language such as English, children learn to read through phonemes. So digraphs such as PH in phone, TH in think, and WH in wheel have to be directly taught to EL since they don't exist in Spanish. In the data that I will share, I will be sharing the Tellpass composite score. The composite score is a combination of the reading, writing, listening, and speaking. They are weighted differently and reading is weighted by fifty percent, writing is thirty percent of the score, and listening and speaking are each ten percent. Last year, we had many things that we worked on for our English learners. I wanted to just share just one of the things that we did last year. Last year, I traveled with Dr. Michael McLendon, Provost of Baylor University, to the Mission Foods Texas Mexico Center official opening at Southern Methodist University in Dallas. Mr. Jeronimo Gutierrez, Mexican Ambassador to the United States, and our Texas Secretary of State, Rolando Pablo, were also there. Dr. McLendon spoke to the importance of education and opportunities for our Hispanic population and the work that Baylor is doing in this area in our collaboration between Baylor and Waco ISD and their efforts to increase and open a bilingual program at Baylor University. Overall, we saw an increase in Tellpass scores with a minor, almost statistically insignificant drop in fifth grade. You will notice that the growth in our students as they progress through elementary school where they have basically almost reached an advanced level in fifth grade from an intermediate grade level in second grade. We also saw growth in sixth and eighth grade. There was a drop in seventh grade and we analyzed the data. We looked at demographics, attendance, and achievement data. Anytime we see a drop as a department, this is a concern for us and we act immediately to see how we can address it. What we found was that from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and seventeen, the newcomer population in seventh grade almost doubled from eight to thirteen students. While this does not seem like much, newcomers made up nine percent of the total population that was tested for that grade level and we tested one hundred and thirty-seven students. If students have been in the country for more than one year, they count on STAR. Since Tellpass measures growth, when you have students that are at the beginner level, they statistically will pull the meat. And that's what you see in the data that you are looking at. We are addressing this drop by addressing that same cohort who are now eighth graders. And Ms. Lynn Callentine, who's here with us tonight, is working directly with students at the middle school level to address their unique needs. We are also working with students, not only that are newcomers, but our students that we saw in the data that needed intense support. Next, I have the high school results. Overall, we saw growth in high school with a drop in ninth grade and we see this as being due to transitioning to the high school. ELs at the high school level have more of a learned history in their native language. To help with transitions, we meet with principals right away. For example, this year, we met with Mr. Edison and Mr. Love and we did the same last year. We meet right away with the principals, we meet with our leadership team, and we form intervention groups right away. We look at achievement data and we look at also at language data when forming these groups. By doing this, you'll see that the students begin to make up that loss in tenth grade and it's quite a, I mean, they make, they really make gains from ninth to tenth grade. A celebration that we saw that I'm happy to share with you and that I was hoping to be able to do that I told you I would, I really wanted to bring you last year, was that our eleventh and twelfth graders grew. We were, we were seeing a pattern where we were losing our students in eleventh and twelfth grade. They were leaving us to work and they were leaving not just to work, but to work in jobs that were minimum wage, which would basically perpetuate a cycle for them. We're not only having our students show gains in language, but we're keeping them in school and more students tested last year, this year than they did last year. Now I'm going to share the STAR assessment results with you. Our English learners saw gains in STAR reading, especially in fifth grade. Ms. Kathleen Rooney and Melissa Johnson have worked very hard with teachers, ensuring that they have the training and they know the strategies that help our English learners. We work a lot with teachers on phonics, phonemic awareness, fluency, and vocabulary, which are essential to English learners. And we also work a lot on writing, which you'll see in one of the slides. Next, I have the math results. We saw slight drops in math with the exception of fourth grade where we had double-digit increases. Math board problems are very hard for our English learners. However, I'm happy to report that math is no longer an area where we will be staged for some of the grade levels in PBMAS. And I feel this is due to the hard work of Ms. Ebony Cousins, our content specialist for math. We worked very hard, as I shared, with our ESL and bilingual teachers last year and provided them with a, with a three-part series, Writing Academy. And we saw the results of their hard work. They made, they made gains in writing and grew by eight points, by eight percentage points.
Mr. President, quick question.
Yes.
So, Mrs. Benson, would it be accurate if the kids that were in fourth grade this year, did they have a drop in math, in reading last year?
They, the students in fourth grade actually grew.
Last year?
They, they grew last year, yes, sir.
So that's a cohort of kids that every year they're showing exponential increases in their counterparts the year before and the year after.
Yes, and we.
Are unable to do the same.
Yes, sir. We, I was very happy to share last year with the board that last year we saw the same trend. And we're really, one of the things we really wanted to keep was that momentum going at the secondary level because we were seeing that that momentum was there and then it started to drop. And so that was one of the things we really wanted to address is keep that momentum going for the students. And so, make sure that now you have the, and so now in front of you, you have our secondary results for STAR. I'm happy to report that we did have growth in secondary. We worked very hard with our secondary ESL teachers last year and with our schools. And we did, we saw the growth. And Ms. Lynn Callentine, who is here, one of our content specialists, Ms. Julie Peña, our ESL strategist interventions, works directly with students and their families. And we had a lot of meetings with parents. We have an advisory council that is for Hispanic families and we have students in that council. And they gave us a lot of feedback at the secondary level of what they needed. And so we use that feedback and we saw the growth in our students. And while in English one and two, we still, for me, I feel we have much more room to grow, I feel like we're not regressing anymore and we're keeping our students. In math, we saw an even, an even stronger increase and we have made great strides at the secondary level. And I feel this is due to a lot of the hard work of Ms. Sarah Scott, who works very closely with the teachers. And I, I'm just so proud of the kids when I look at these scores, especially our Algebra One scores. But as you can see, that same seventh grade cohort struggled last year. We're watching those kiddos really closely. And then I wanted to provide you with some information about our language acquisition program. We had a wonderful program last year for our students. We had one hundred and fifty-eight pre-kindergarten and kindergarten English learners that we invited to the program. One hundred and forty of them attended, which is pretty good for attendance when we invited one hundred and fifty-eight. And, you know, Ms., our wonderful principal at Bells Hill is allowed to, you know, she hosted us and the kids loved being in the campus and it was a great summer with, you know, the students. One thing that I want to share is when the students go to language acquisition summer school, they don't have recess. They work from start of the day to finish. And they're working on literacy, they're working on math, they're working on oral language, they're working on vocabulary, and it is all work. We do a pre-test and a post-test in reading and in math and we saw gains. And so I, I really want to thank our teachers, our bilingual teachers that teach in the program because they're working with pre-K students and kindergartners without recess and they make it fun and they make it engaging. And so just wanted to say, you know, thank them for all their hard work.
Want to introduce your teammates that are here?
Yes, sir. This is Ms. Kathleen Rooney, Content Specialist for the English Learners Department, and this is Ms. Lynn Callentine. She's our secondary Content Specialist for the English Learners Department. They're a wonderful, wonderful team. Ms. Melissa Johnson is not here, she's not feeling well, but she is another important member of our department.
Thank you, Ms. Benson.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson.
Any questions from the board, comments? Go ahead, Ms. Cordway.
Ms., Dr. Benson, I think the, as I look through some of these, the STAR reading results in the secondary for both reading and math and even grade four writing, I mean, some of these gains are double-digit gains and it looks like it's really trending upward. And so I just want to commend you and your team for that because that takes a lot of hard work and obviously the teachers and administrators.
Thank you so much. That means a lot to us.
Yeah, I was, and my question, I think that I have is, the first question I have is, so the difference between bilingual and ESL, are kids who speak primarily Spanish at home, those are bilingual and then they kind of test out through the Tellpass and they become ESL or how does that, what's the difference between the two?
Yes, ma'am. For bilingual is one of the programs that we offer. In our district, we offer a bilingual program for Spanish speakers. Some districts like Dallas also offer Vietnamese. You have to have twenty students that speak the same language at the same grade level to be able to start a program for a specific language. Students have the choice either to attend a bilingual program or an ESL program. And we always educate the parents about the importance of bilingual education and in the end, it's the parents' decision and sometimes they do choose ESL. Students can choose either or of the programs. And for both programs, for bilingual and ESL, they have to exit the program through a special exit criteria that's provided and they do take Tellpass into account in STAR.
Okay. Yeah, that's, I was just trying to understand.
I could add to that, Mrs. Cordway. You know, it's been my experience that one of the things we need to do is educate our parents more on the benefits of bilingual and ESL. Because a lot of our Latino families, I'm sure some of you can speak to this, you know, I've heard it said, we send the kids to learn English, you know? And so trying to determine how much we teach in the English language, how much we go off of their, their home language, that's a struggle. And really, we're trying to get kids exactly what their families want, but a lot of people will come in and say, no, no bilingual. And it really ends up hurting some of our kids because they're trying to, trying to, it's really an old-school way, you know, of doing it. It's called immersion. And, you know, that's technically criminal if you look at a kid sitting in there struggling and they can't learn only because of the language.
Yes, sir. And that's a lot of what we share with our parents in the advisory council and in the meetings is the research that's, that's there of immersion and how students struggle that have been in immersion programs versus bilingual programs and ESL programs and how we've seen them make achievement gains.
Yes, ma'am.
And I have one more question. The, you know, I noticed in the bilingual program, pre-K through second, you know, it starts tapering off at second, but then the ESL program kind of starts gaining a little bit of, in numbers.
Yeah.
Third through sixth. And then I was looking at the STAR reading results for third grade and STAR math results for third grade. Can you speak to kind of why it looks like they have more gains in fourth grade and then they, specifically for reading, it looks like they kind of pick up a little bit more momentum in fifth grade, they have even kind of greater gains? Could you kind of speak to that third grade?
Yes, absolutely. What, what happens is that our, our district doesn't offer bilingual and for certain grade levels in all of the schools. And so what happens is we offer the parents, if they're in a campus where they don't offer bilingual in third grade, we offer the parents a campus that's where they do offer it. And many times the parents choose to stay at the campus and so then they choose to, for their child to be served through an ESL program, which is the kind of program I was served under. And this is, this is English-only instruction. So basically, they're going from bilingual instruction to now only English instruction. So we sometimes see a dip that first year for them, which is exactly what you're seeing. And then by the time they get to fourth grade, they've become more accustomed to the, you know, their teachers are using those sheltered instruction strategies, they're, you know, they're, they're doing every, all the good things that our good ESL teachers do, using cognates, we're helping them with phonics, with comprehension. And so then we start to see the students do better, but we do, we see a dip. We see a dip and, and, you know, we do try and have the parents allow us to place their children at a campus that does offer a bilingual program. And many times, they, they say, no, I want them to stay with their brother and sister. I want them to stay, you know, with their peers and their friends. So that's, that's something that we work with, with the parents. Sometimes they say yes, though. Sometimes they, they do say yes, which we always celebrate.
Okay. Yeah, that's great. In the bilingual, sorry, when we're saying, we're talking about the bilingual education, the phonemes and in bilingual education, they cover that. Obviously, they're trying to make them proficient in Spanish and in English.
Yes.
Correct.
We use the Estrella Program in bilingual for, for Spanish. And the teachers do also, I mean, they also do phonics and they do phonemic awareness in English as well. But they do, we do have a curriculum that we use.
Perfect. Those were my questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cordway. Ms. Perez?
Yes, on the Tellpass, on the seventh graders, I see, we saw a considerable drop there. Can you explain to me again or to us?
Yes, yes, sir.
Because I didn't get it all. What do you do when you see that?
Yes, sir. When we saw that drop, that, that concerned us very much. We, one of the things that we do every year is we, we not only analyze the data, but we also provide all of the principals with the data for their incoming students. And one of the things that we noticed right away in looking at the data, we looked at the demographics, we looked at attendance, we looked at, you know, achievement data, their language, how they did on Tellpass, were they at the beginner level, intermediate level, advanced. And what we noticed, what really just, just stood out from everything was that when we looked at our newcomer data, we have students who are newcomers and they are, they are students that are coming to the United States for the first time. When we compared the previous year to the current, to the current year, we saw a doubling of newcomers for that grade level. And so what happens is with Tellpass, it assesses language. And so if we have nine percent of our students that are probably going to be at the beginner level once they're tested, they will skew that mean, that data for the other students. And that's where we, when we looked at it, it just, I mean, when we started doing the math, that's where we saw the difference. And then if you look. And then, if you look at the next grades after that, these students, I mean, even if you look at STAR, we saw it across the board, even in STAR, in math as well. And so, it's definitely that we have some students in that seventh grade, which is now our eighth graders, that are going to need a lot of support, because they are basically learning the English language at the middle school level. And so, we have newcomer specialists that go out to the middle schools, and then we also have Ms. Callentine, who's here tonight, and she's working directly with the students in intervention groups. We use a curriculum intervention called RIGER, and that was developed by Margarita Calderón, and it's specially for English learners at the secondary level.
You know, it makes it pretty tough when a child, a student comes in the United States for the first time.
Yes.
And then putting them in a grade level where he doesn't understand it.
Yes, yes.
You know, I applaud you guys, I mean, ladies.
He's a teenager.
I applaud you all a lot, that y'all doing a good job with these students, and y'all continue doing it, because, you know, if they're going to stay here in the United States, they're going to have to definitely learn.
Yes, sir.
And I'm sure they come, one of the reasons to come is to get educated and live a better life.
Yes, sir. And many times, they come without family, so they have social, emotional needs to think.
For the record, many, many a school districts in Texas, this is well documented, so I'm not trying to disparage anyone, but what used to happen is if you came from a foreign country, let's say Mexico, and you were fourteen or thirteen, and you didn't speak the language, they put you in the third grade. And you stayed in the third grade until you spoke English. So, think about some of those elementary classes that had eight-year-olds sitting in one row and a fourteen-year-old sitting in the next row. So, that's why I use the word criminal, because some of those practices have been specifically targeted that we end those practices. The other thing I would say to Trustee Pettis, is when you start looking at middle school, from beginner level to intermediate to advanced to advanced high, you know, between intermediate and advanced, that's where our kids are falling, and that's to be applauded, because really, they're beginners. They just get some quality instruction real fast, get into immediate, get into intermediate quickly. Now, the struggle is to get them to advanced, or eventually advanced high, but we're certainly up to the challenge, and I appreciate the work that's being done in that department.
That's what I thought we were doing, you know, if a fourteen-year-old came into the United States, we'd drop him down to first grade. That's, I know that's what used to happen, and I didn't know exactly what we did here, because I never, I guess, really paid attention.
We keep them with their grade-level peers, and we provide newcomer support through newcomer specialists. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Manning?
Wonderful job, Mrs. Benson. First of all, I applaud you and your group for doing this.
Thank you, Mr. Manning.
But one question that, and this may be kind of early in the process.
Yes, sir.
But I'm quite sure, what you guys are doing now, how do you think that this is going to support these youth as they go forth and graduate? And are y'all going, I don't know if you have any baseline to start on, but will you be keeping a baseline on, you know, when they start in kindergarten or whatever, as they progress, and what percentage of them do finally graduate with us?
Yes, sir. One of the things that we're really working on at the high school level with Ms. Callentine is to keep our students in school. One of the things that happened with English learners sadly is that, once they get to tenth grade, and then they reach eleventh grade, many times, we lose them to work. They leave to work to help their family. And so, one of the things that we're doing is through the work of Ms. Lynn Callentine and Ms. Julie Peña, who is not here tonight. Ms. Julie Peña is an ESL Strategist Interventionist, and a huge part of her role is working with our families. And so, she meets with families on a regular basis to talk about the importance of education and keeping the students in school, because while they may leave to get a, you know, minimum wage job, when you look at the reality of life and, you know, what you need to earn to have, you know, quality in your life, you know, they're just thinking right now, right here, not in the future when they have a family. So, we work a lot with the families, because we feel that by working with the families, that's going to help build that common knowledge of the importance of keeping the students in school. And another thing we're doing is we're working with families also through homework clinics that Ms. Kathleen Rooney started, and she's actually going to be doing a homework clinic with our families from Estela Maxi at J.H. Hines, and we'll be working with them, with Ms. Rooney and Ms. Cousins. And that was actually a request from parents at J.H. Hines that had heard about our homework clinic that we do, and they requested a homework clinic to learn more about the math their children are doing, so they could help them with the math. And so, we feel that by that work that we're doing with families, we will see eventually that we will see more of our students will stay in school, and we'll see their achievement increase, because the research shows the more you involve the parents, the more likely they are to go to college. And that's well documented in the research. And so, we were really excited about J.H. Hines, because that's going to be an ongoing session. We already have like the next eight sessions already on the calendar. So, we're very excited. This is going to be ongoing, we're going to be meeting with them to talk about what the students in the primary grades are doing in math, and showing them how to do it. They're going to be getting special books that they can use with their children, and then we're also going to be doing it for the intermediate grades. And Ms. Ebony Cousins is working with the math coaches and Ms. Rooney on that.
Fantastic. That is really, really encouraging to see that, I mean, that our purpose is to graduate our students.
Yes.
And that's the bottom line to make sure that they all graduate. Great job, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Manning, any other questions from the board? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, President. Thank you very much, President Atkins.
Dr. Nelson, anything you want to highlight on the time tracker information?
No, just want to commend this board for your outstanding work to move our time tracker forward, and also appreciate our staff being prepared to bring you presentations that engage your cooperation.
Thanks, sir. Anybody have any reports on any of the committees that they serve on on behalf of the board?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Manning, you're increasing the denominator now, so you're hurting our fraction on the student outcome tracker.
I'll make this real simple, man, it's about students.
On this past weekend before last, when we were at the TASB training, of course, I'm the district representative to the delegate assembly. Every board number has a copy of all the proposed advocacy resolutions recommended for adoption that will be presented at the next legislative action. And what I did, I just gave you all of them, just so you can go through and see what they are. And one that I've been talking to Mrs. Teakle about is one, TASB support changes to the TEA-ILIT process. That's on page thirty-two of this. And then, the other one that was very interesting, every couple of years, Colleen always make a proposal to give students citations from their police officers, but I think every other year, they do that, and every other year, it's a resolution not recommended for adoption by the TASB, by our advocacy group. But I'll put that one in there also, just so you can see what that one is.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. We appreciate you representing us on the Board of Delegates. Any other committees anybody wants to report on? Sandra, we do need to make one change. Ms. Teakle is now our representative on the City Center Board instead of Mr. Sykes. I think that's the first one listed. All right. Monthly and quarterly financial reports, Cheryl, is there anything you wanted to highlight? Oh, Cheryl's not here. Anybody in the budget office want to highlight anything? You don't have to.
If you have any questions, I'll kind of answer them.
Anybody have any questions on the monthly or quarterly financials? All right, you get off easy. That's D and E both, correct? Anybody have any question on the annual financial?
Sure.
All right, move on to discussion of possible action next week. If you have any corrections to the minutes, let Sandra know. Anybody have any questions on the budget amendments? Anybody have any questions on the bid awards or bid renewal at item C or D? Any questions on the interlocal agreement with the Waco Police Department? Any questions on the list of qualified brokers, the source of investment officer training, or the investment policy at items F, G, and H? Already covered item I. Any questions on the teacher appraisers? And then, I think we're going to pull item K. Dr. Nelson, you have anything further?
No, sir.
Anybody have anything else from the board? Hearing no objection, we'll stand adjourned at eight fifteen.